Meeting for Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Carl, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley, Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson. Bunstness.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman. Here. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve last week's meetings for the February tenth meeting. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
Moved.
Second.
And a motion from Bunstness and a second from Lunsman. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Nay. Minutes are approved. First order of business is our open forum. We've got Casey Wise-Mantle here with the CBB presenting his report on their marketing activities. Casey, welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Well, I appreciate you, Mayor Shawman, for letting us come and present tonight, city council members. I hope I'm not the reason why two of you are gone tonight. I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Again, we are here on behalf of the Convention and Visitors Bureau giving you our quarterly four report, along with our two thousand and nineteen recap, year-to-date totals. You guys all know who we are, what we do, and why we do. Trying to put those heads in beds for the community of Aberdeen. To jump right into it, tracking our website statistics for the fourth quarter. We have a new way of tracking our website now through Google Analytics. So I apologize, those numbers will not match up with previous numbers we've had in the past. Just the Pwic platform and the Google Analytics just don't mesh together. But on the visit side of things, for the fourth quarter, we saw six thousand new visitors come to our website, sessions creating seventy-seven hundred sessions and seventeen thousand page views. Of those returning, majority of those are ladies, tracking website through the Visit Aberdeen. Ladies usually predominantly make the plans, vacation plans, when you're looking to plan that trip to Aberdeen. It's always the ladies that are making those accommodations. So, nothing that we're not used to, seventeen thousand page views. You know, unique page views, almost fourteen thousand. What are they tracking on our website? Events. What's there to do in Aberdeen? Our events, our calendar of events, our two thousand and twenty vacation package that we give away, employment, and then again, calendar of events seems to be in our top resources. On the hunt-fish side of things, we had about twenty-six hundred visitors, twenty-five hundred of them being new, which equates to about, just about seventy-five hundred page sessions there. Ladies versus men on the hunting side of things, men are planning that hunting getaway, that hunting destination. Page views on the hunting aspect, our gun giveaway that we did, our pheasant sandwich shootout, tracking hunting lodges and outfitters, along with our two thousand and twenty-one hunt giveaway that we started right at the very end of last year. Again, all of those are designated, the two thousand and twenty vacation giveaway, the gun giveaway, the two thousand and twenty-one hunt giveaway, all of those are in favor of us capturing their contact information and their email addresses so we can communicate at a later date. And again, those predominantly being male visitors that are looking at that website. On the social media side of things, Facebook, we saw an increase of page likes of just about a half a percent, page followers about a half a percent. Page reach was down a little bit, along with page impressions, and then video views was up sixty-four percent. So, video views, which we've kind of discussed a little bit in our office, that we want to put together for two thousand and twenty moving forward, video seems to be the way to go. Facebook followers increased by five percent, Twitter by just under a half percent. That's for the visit side of things. On the hunting side of things, page likes, we're just under a half a percent. Page followers, just under three tenths of a percent. Page reach and page impressions were down again. Fourth quarter, obviously, hunting and fishing is big in the community, but it's happening right now. So it's tough to promote to something that's already happening. So you kind of, kind of, you kind of have a tendency to do that on the front side. Followers on Twitter increased by four hundred and eighty percent. I guess I must have put a post out that day or something, but we had a good, good reaction there. Twitter increased by almost a half a percent, and impressions through Twitter were up a hundred and twelve percent. So, social media is strong, again, for us, utilizing contests and giveaways. How can we capture those email addresses so we can communicate at a later date? We've gone so far as being very good at capturing those, that contact information that we had to up our subscription to constant contact. We've reached the threshold of where we can be, and we had to buy the next tier up. So that's a good thing. That's a good problem to have. Excuse me. Some of the, the reach we've had, or specials that we threw out there for social media, we had a suite night at the Wings where you could register to win one of the suites up above. The Dakota Bond Spiel that happened in Aberdeen, we were able to tag all of the other bond spiels and all the other curling clubs that were happening around the area to really promote that event. Home for the Holidays through the Wings, best seat in the street through Gypsy Days. What we did is we took a section of the Gypsy Day Parade and sectioned it off and put a canopy tent above it and spun it out there as try to win the best seat in the street during the Gypsy Day Parade. And I think we've been, what, rained out or snowed out twice now? Two years in a row? Okay, so there's, there's hope. The Nutcracker, the performance of the Nutcracker is one of our stronger ones again. So again, we're always trying to package, do, do what we can with the quarter that we have in play. In the fourth quarter, Wings Hockey, the Arts Council, all of those events and attractions are what we have at the moment to play with, and we try to promote those the best that we can. Some of the leads in the events that we have moving forward, Midwest Wrestling Duels that are going to be happening in February of two thousand and twenty, along with the USA BMX Nationals that we successfully bid with Kyle's help for August of two thousand and twenty, along with the AAU Wrestling Tournament that's going to happen March of two thousand and twenty-one. These are all some of the other events that we host, along with State B Basketball and Swim Meets and Soccer Meets and Lacrosse Meets and any of those tournaments and championships that Aberdeen's known for. Aberdeen's a sports town. And to have those facilities, whether they're being revamped, or they have been revamped, but to have those facilities at our disposal makes Aberdeen a huge draw for sporting events. Some of the conventions that we follow and track, as you guys know, all of our services are free of charge. We don't charge for any of the services we provide, whether it's name tag assistance, room blocks, room rates, tours, group tours, mayor welcomes, we do it all, and we do it all free of charge. Some of the conventions that we hosted in two thousand and nineteen, some of the bigger ones I have highlighted, and you guys will all get copies of this too, by the way, so. But some of the bigger events we have highlighted, Pheasants Forever State Conference, anything high school activities related, One Act Play, State B Basketball, All-State Jazz, Footsall Tournament, hockey tournaments, there's hosting, Six Oh Five Magazine hosting. We had some outdoor writers and some bloggers come through that we hosted, the Sherm Conference that was held during Leader Cast. Anything NSU related, the Trap Shoot, the state trap shoot that we hosted successfully for the last three years. You guys probably didn't really hold, didn't really know a whole lot about it, but we just secured the bid to host the state trap shoot for the next five years in Aberdeen. That's going to bring upwards of nine hundred athletes for three days, three days straight. That's going to be a huge event. It's going to happen in June. June's going to be a busy month. So just be prepared for it. Aviation Day, some smaller events that we want to help get off the ground. Aviation Day, Family Fun Weekend, all of the Lucas Oil Events held out at Brown County Speedway, the Arts Council, anything that they're hosting, Storybook Land Festival, Monster Truck, MSA, the Shriners, when they came here in August, or sorry, end of July. That was a huge influx in Aberdeen, along with the Aberdeen Carding Club. They were host, they were set to host their, their state race down in Brookings and got flooded out, and the Aberdeen Carding Club was able to accommodate them to make that happen. The South Dakota State BMX Championship, Film Festival, Nurses Association, Fairs and Celebrations, Gypsy Day Parade. I mean, there's, the list goes on and on. And all of these, some way, somehow, we had a hand in. Whether it was promoting, whether it was visitor bags, whether it was name tags, whether, whatever it might have been, somehow, some way, we had a help in, in making that event happen. Along with the events, we are also the advocate for the Aberdeen Hotel Alliance. Anytime somebody wants to request funding to help offset the cost of their event, conference, sporting event, festival, whatever it might be, they approach the Aberdeen Hotel Alliance. How do they do that? They approach the Aberdeen Hotel Alliance through us. They meet with us first. Why? So we can get the date of that event. That's really important when you're trying to put together a calendar. We can get the date of that event. We can get the contact information, all the pertinent information that we need, whether or not they need hotel rooms, whether or not there's hotel rooms available to even host your event. So they work steadily with us, which in turn, we take that entity and we work with the Hotel Alliance and allow them to submit and request funding through the Hotel Alliance. Looking at two thousand and nineteen, some of the things that were funded, the Bull Riding Classic, Brown County Speedway, the Family Violence Conference, Lacrosse Championship, BMX, Storybook Land, Aviation Day, Arts in the Park, Shrine, Sizzling Summer Nights, Adaptive Ski, Carding Club, Trappers, Oktoberfest, South Dakota Fairs and Celebration, Downtown Concert Series, Film Festival, Snow Queen, Midwest Wrestling Duos, Cavalier Classic, anything Y-related, basketball tournaments. Dakota Slideways, the new RC Club out in the mall. They just got done hosting their Bull, Bull Ring Three Hundred, which brought a ton of people in for three days out at the Aberdeen Mall. And how can we possibly get more people to go to the Aberdeen Mall? That is one way to do it. So, we appreciate them. The Gun Club again, the Aberdeen Football Club, Hockey Curling Club, Boys and Girls Club, Q Club, and the Bowling and Curling Club. So rounding, rounding all those out, January through December to the tune of ninety-one thousand four hundred dollars, was given out, allocated by the Hotel Alliance to help offset the cost of hosting an event, special event, conference, or what can we do to possibly help bring those people to Aberdeen? That was their, their goal. Looking at our occupancy tax numbers, these are numbers, anytime somebody rents a hotel room in Aberdeen, they pay an extra two dollar sales tax. Occupancy numbers, in a nutshell, were up one point nine one percent over last year. Three hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six versus three hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and six. So, they were up, yeah, it's a difference of thirty-one, thirty-one hundred hotel rooms for the year. That's, that's quite a bit. And with the addition of the new hotel being built, I wish that was going to be built a month sooner. But with State B Basketball and events and stuff like that, I mean, anytime we can get people to spend the night in a hotel and to pay that occupancy tax, it's a great way to track what a true visitor really is. Along with that, we track SIC codes, and that's taxable receipts on lodging, eating, and drinking. And to give you the nutshells there, two thousand and nineteen versus two thousand and eighteen, lodging was up six point three percent. Eating was up four point four, drinking was up twelve point six, and the year-to-date total, we were up five point eight four percent over last year, tracking two thousand and nineteen versus two thousand and eighteen. This part of it, I want to hand over to Rita with the Visitor Center and the report that she puts together through there. She does an excellent job with the Visitor Center staff. Obviously, fourth quarter is kind of our off-season, but we're always looking at how can we be more readily prepared for next year, but I'll hand this over to her.
So, this year, out at Storybook Land, we staff it, and we also have volunteers out there as well. And what they try to do is they try to welcome everyone that comes into the Visitor Center. Now, this is just our numbers that we capture, actual people that we talk to that are in there. We don't, we aren't able to get the exact number of visitors to Storybook Land, which I know is much higher than what we have here. But what we can tell is, obviously, Aberdeen area, they take the daycares out there and the kids, and everyone goes out there. But also, North Dakota, we have a very large number of people from North Dakota that do come down and visit Storybook Land. And also, Minnesota, obviously, are higher states too. But our couple surprises, we have quite a bit from Iowa that come up as well. Even, there must have been some family reunions because California and Colorado had higher numbers this year as well. And again, all this information will be in your packet that Casey emails to you. What I also did out there this year is the, I did a National Smores Day surprise. So I made smores packets, and I took them out to the campground at Storybook Land, and I walked up, because you know, when you camp, you can just kind of approach anyone, and knocked on their camper and said, "Hi, would you like some chocolate? If so, where are you from?" And just kind of got a capture of who they are, where they're from, and why they stopped here. And it was grandparents, and it was young couples, and it was everyone in between that was out there, different groups. Some of them, it was their first time out at Storybook Land, and they couldn't wait to come back next year. Some of them have been there for years and years, and they always come a certain weekend. It was just really fun to meet them and capture some of their information.
Some of the other events that we hosted, not so much events, but just something we really take pride in. Obviously, our airport welcome. We greet the hunters as they fly in. We try to get the community involved in as much as possible. Catherine, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce you. Our newest staff member, Catherine Grandstrand. Surprise. No. She is here. We actually, she comes to us from the Aberdeen American News. She's been with us now for just right around a month, yeah. But she's actually wearing one of our t-shirts that we promoted for the fall pheasant hunt, celebrating the hundred years of the pheasant hunting tradition. And again, we got all the businesses involved, tried to get all the bars and restaurants, Hitch and Post, all the retail places involved to help spread that wealth of, hey, we're really proud of the hundred years and hoping for another hundred more. But you know, that, along with our pheasant sandwich shootout that we do, you know, just, just the promotions that we try to utilize during that fourth quarter when things are a little light, the pheasant sandwich shootout and the airport welcome are things that a lot of other communities can't, they just don't provide. They don't have the opportunities that we do. So, we appreciate that. My last little bit of information here is information I received from South Dakota Tourism. They're a company called Arrivalist. I think I kind of shared that with you the last time I was in here. And this is again, looking at fourth quarter, the Arrivalist information. And they can track via pixel. They can track where everybody comes from, puts a little green dot on the map. And it's kind of scary how fast that map gets filled up in a hurry with green, but it's, it's good to see because if it wasn't green, that means nobody's visiting. But to give you some, some information here, tracking residents and non-residents. So residents of South Dakota and non-residents coming to South Dakota for the month of October, non-residents equated to eighteen thousand trips that arrived in Aberdeen. All of this is Aberdeen information. Eighteen thousand trips. They spent seventeen, almost eighteen hours here, and their average time in South Dakota was just under two days. Residents equated to twenty-two thousand trips, spending fifteen and a half hours here and a day, just over a day in South Dakota altogether. That's pretty big. And, and where are they coming from? Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Fargo, Valley City, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, Rapid City, and Omaha. So we're kind of getting a pretty good sweep of where people are coming from. Now, where did they visit the cross pollination, or however you want to call that, the cross visitation? Where did they visit on their way home? So they arrived in Aberdeen, they stopped in Watertown, Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Brookings, Sioux Falls Airport, and Pier, Fort Pier. Those are the non-residents. Residents went to Watertown, Fort Pier, Sioux Falls, Brookings, here on us, and Sioux Falls Airport again. So maybe there's, there's something we need to do. We're losing some visitors to the Sioux Falls Airport, but at least they're coming to Aberdeen, so that's good. Looking at November, non-residents was just under sixteen thousand trips, equated to almost twenty-one hours in Aberdeen and two days in South Dakota. Residents was fourteen thousand trips, basically twenty hours in Aberdeen and just over a day in South Dakota. And they arrived from, this is November again, Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Fargo, Valley City, Minot, Bismarck, Dixon, Rapid City, Omaha, the same list we just had for October. And these are some of the key markets that we hit with advertising as well, whether it's hunting related or visitor related. Where do they cross-visit on their way home? Watertown, Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Brookings, Rapid City, Sioux Falls Airport for non-residents. Residents were Watertown, Pier, Sioux Falls, Huron, Brookings, and Rapid City. Again, that was the month of November. Now, December, on the other hand, non-residents, just under fifteen thousand trips, which equated to twenty-one hours in Aberdeen or two, just over two days in South Dakota. Non, or sorry, residents was eighteen thousand trips with twenty hour, nineteen hours in Aberdeen and a day, just over a day in South Dakota. Again, the list, they came from the same spots. Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Minneapolis, Fargo, Rapid, Bismarck, Omaha. Non-residents come from Watertown, or cross-visit Watertown, Sioux Falls, Brookings, Mitchell, Huron, Fort Pier. Residents, Pier, Fort Pier, Watertown, Sioux Falls, Huron, Mitchell, Chamberlain, Ocoma. So, that's a strange one there. But those are the visitors that South Dakota, somehow, some way, they are exposed to a South Dakota brand or a South Dakota resource or South Dakota advertising. And when they are exposed to that, they get this little pixel that's created or dropped on their phone somehow, and that is how South Dakota Tourism tracks those little green dots as they come to the area. So. Any questions on, on anything that we presented tonight? We're really looking forward to two thousand and twenty. We have some new ideas that we want to explore. You know, as I mentioned earlier, the video aspect, we want to explore that as well, however we can increase that engagement. There's some big conventions on the radar, some big events on the radar that are happening as well. And the phones are ringing in the office. So, any questions you guys have? Yes, Lynn?
Can you tell the council what your budgeted annual allocation amount is for the Hotel Alliance?
What are budgeted allocation?
Annual allocation. How much do you try to give out every year?
They bring in, just like I said, that mark of the occupancy, right under that, last year was around that thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand mark. Of that, they spend a hundred and twenty thousand with a marketing agency out of Rapid City, which they did put out for bids. But they spend that money with them, and then everything else basically is, is fair play. A lot of it just depends on the heads in beds, the amount, well, the criteria that they use is attendees, overnight stays, heads in beds, and the exposure of what that would bring to Aberdeen. Everything else is in play. They save a little bit unreserved for facilitation through the CBB. We're right at about what, forty, forty thousand, give or take. So you have that one sixty mark altogether, and I think they reserve another ten thousand for website.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking it is because when you add our promotion fund to your fund, there's a substantial amount of dollars that's being reallocated into the community for promotion type activities.
Absolutely. And they want the city council to be aware of the funds that they, or the events that they're funding. And they want the city of Aberdeen to be aware of the events that they're funding because a lot of these events without their funding would, would struggle, or just flat out wouldn't happen. Or they might be one, one and done, one year and done. So, they want people to be aware that, that they're, that they're open to requests and they're open to events. We're always trying to find that new event or that new niche, or what can we do, what can we bring to Aberdeen that's never been done? So, yeah.
So Casey, that ninety-one thousand dollars quarterly that was given to promote these, to the events themselves?
Yep.
Facilitate them?
Yep.
Is that pretty represent, that must be a large chunk of what they give out annually then?
It is.
So that's for this calendar year more than likely?
That would be part of last year's, last year's budget, yes. The two thousand and nineteen, that was two thousand and nineteen allocation for events, yes.
Gotcha.
Yep. Would this year be a repeat? It'll probably be pretty close. You know, there are some big hitters in there with the, the Shrine Conference of fifteen thousand, the EMT Conference of ten thousand, BMX in there as well with their ask. So it all, it all depends on how the calendar plays out. But I would suggest that, or I would expect that it's probably going to be pretty close, yeah.
So that ninety-one thousand was for the quarter, or that was for all?
Oh, that was for the whole year. I'm sorry. Yep, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question.
Does anyone else have any questions for Casey?
That's right.
Councilman Ronan.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, Casey, I'm curious, do you, do you recommend any changes to the way we are handling marketing, handling the promotional fund and that marketing aspect of it?
Just give me more money.
Whose money do you want?
You know, we, you know, and I've always tried to be very respectful in our ask. You know, we, we are in the same boat as, as everybody. I'd like to think we're in the same boat as you guys up there as well. We just want the best for Aberdeen and what we can provide. I like to think that I can stretch our dollar to at least a dollar twenty-five based on a lot of the relationships that we have, whether it's through outdoor media, travel writers, travel bloggers. I just, I like to push as far as we can. Is there any changes? I, I don't, I don't know. I guess maybe I'm not qualified to make that recommendation or that answer. But like I said, with, with what we have allocated, we try to do the best that we can.
Councilman.
I'm sorry if that didn't answer your question.
It was a good dodge, though.
I guess I didn't understand the answer there. Do you expect to request approximately the same amount that you requested this last year, which was a significant increase over?
We did, you're right. We did request an increase over last year. And our thought was, we were hoping to partner with South Dakota Tourism in their co-op program. It's a forty thousand buy-in with a forty thousand match. Luckily, the Hotel Alliance was able to step up and partner with South Dakota Tourism. They were able to, to make that connection, which I don't want to say let us off the hook, but it just, it allowed us to maybe not have to absorb that deep this year. And, and like I've said, we've always tried to be very respectful in the asks that we, we put forth. I'd like to think that what we do put on paper is, is justified. We try not to overstep our bounds by no means.
Okay, so the question was, we're going to ask for more money this year?
We, we will. Man, you guys are tough. Oh, Councilman Rex has a question.
Two questions. I see that we got slotted the State Bs for another year.
Two thousand and twenty-three is on, on paper, yes.
Two thousand and twenty-three is on paper. Does, of course, the new hotel being built help our position to have them going forward?
It, it will. There's a threshold of like nine hundred and seven rooms, and right now, we're under that threshold. With the new hotel being built, we will be over that threshold. With that new hotel being built, will those rooms get picked up? Absolutely. I mean, those, those, it'll be a citywide sellout again next year. That new hotel will only help the cost, yes.
And then the next question is, in your thing, it says that the Hotel Alliance has a hundred and twenty thousand that they contract with a marketing firm?
Yes.
What type of marketing is that? More just marketing for Aberdeen or?
It is straight-up marketing for Aberdeen, Aberdeen, yes. It's through Robert Sharpen Associates out of Rapid City. They've done radio giveaways. They've done, they've helped with, when we attend travel shows, giveaways there as well. They're able to buy media placement a little cheaper than we can. Of course, you kind of pay for it a little bit on the backend too, but some creative, there's creative there as well, which obviously frees us up in the office, knowing that you can rely on, on the marketing agency, yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Bunstness.
Has the thought process that the Activities Association changed regarding having State A, D O A, AAA, Bs all at one location?
Still, they're still following that same format, yes.
I think in the next one, if you read the American News, they are going away from that. I think in two thousand and twenty-three, where they're going to have the Class A girls move back around, they weren't having them at the same time.
Yeah. The problem they were running in with having them combined is, who do you go watch? You know, when they're split up, or they're potentially split up in two different venues, who, who do you watch? Who do you go watch? So, that's something I hope that they never do with the Bs. I mean, I hope we can keep those here. I don't, I hope they don't combine them with anything else. I know wrestling, being combined and moving from east to west half of the state back and forth. You know, we used to host wrestling. We used to host it very well. You know, and to go back to your comment earlier, Clint, you know, we're, we're hosting the State Bs through two thousand and twenty-three. That could change at any time. I mean, it's a, it's a site selection committee that puts forth their recommendations on where they want state tournaments held. All we can do is provide the best hospitality, the best rate, the cleanest rooms, the friendliest atmosphere that we possibly can. And we did remind the Hotel Alliance of that today in the meeting, that we're, we're always did remind the Hotel Alliance of that today in the meeting, that we're, we're always under the microscope regardless. But I've also said at other meetings that I attend that just be on notice, there's other communities like Watertown, Mitchell, Huron, Brookings. If we lose anything, we're coming after your stuff. So, I mean, it, it makes perfect sense for everybody to support everybody. This isn't an Aberdeen versus the rest of the state. This isn't Sioux Falls and Rapid versus the rest of the state. It's, everybody should be together on this and provide the best atmosphere that they can for the kids.
So is the Activity Association getting any pushback? Are they receiving comments? Do you know?
What kind of comments are you wondering?
Well, that the, the system is not working.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, they are. And, and, and we are privy to some of those emails. We, there are fires that are created at times, and we put those fires out. You guys don't see that. So.
Well, thanks for coming in, Casey. If no one else has any other questions, I want to commend you guys on a job well done.
Yes, very well done.
Five-point-four percent increase in tax is a good number.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you both for coming in. All three of you, I guess. Catherine, hide in the back. Move right along to old business. We've got second reading of ordinance number 200202. Ordinance approving the issuance and provisions for repayment of the refunding bonds, Series 2020, for the clean water loans. Possible second reading. It passed without objection last week. Can I get a motion on that second reading, please?
Moved. Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonis in a second. Rex, Carl, has anything changed on?
No changes since last week.
Everything remains the same. Does anyone else have anything to contribute on this conversation before we take a vote? Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Pardon me.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rex.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the consent counter items, A, B, and C. Possible approval of those routine city business items. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Ronan in a second. From Lunsman, does anyone have anything to discuss as it relates to any of these items? Otherwise, I'll take a voice vote, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Consider that to be passed. Next, we'll move along to new business ordinance, 200201, ordinance relating to the issuance of additional non-addolorum sales tax revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four-point-two-six million dollars to pay the cost for the softball complex. This is a possible first reading of this ordinance. Can I get a motion?
Moved. Second.
Motion Bunsonis in a second. Ronan, Lynn, are you going to present that, or is that what you're here for?
I'll take it. Okay. As the title stated, this would authorize issuance of sales tax bonds in the amount of four million, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And the sources of funds for payment for those sales tax bonds would be the former ARC bond payment, which, which was two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per year, which equates to about three million, four-hundred-and-ten thousand over a twenty-year period. That would be insufficient to support the project. So Parks and Rec gets an annual allocation of about four-hundred thousand dollars per year out of the sales tax, and they're willing to forego fifty thousand of that and survive off the remaining three, three fifty until they find other pledge amounts, and asking that that be allocated to bring the bond up to four million, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Now, if in fact you do the second reading next week on February twenty-fourth, the effective date would be March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at which time Bond Council then would start making arrangements for sale and closing within sixty days after that effective date, which would bring the money forward probably in May. The opening of bids is supposed to take place April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. In addition, I've given you updates for the cost of the project throughout the weekend. Mark met with the consulting engineers, and they fine-tuned some numbers, and then they also agreed to do some work in-house. And we're only looking at a cost difference of about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand versus four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. So if in fact the bids come in as projected, this should be a doable project within the bond amount.
Lynn, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of in-kind work that we had discussed for Parks Department to handle themselves, is that a number that's figured into these numbers?
You'd have to ask Mark that.
It is not.
Okay, so that could very well cover a majority of this hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar deficiency.
Yeah, right. And then I think what would happen is with some of that is that we would turn to our softball friends to help us to fund what is the in-kind portion of this, of some of this, and even those missing. So, yeah.
Councilman Bunsonis, have you got a question?
Yeah, so it says not to exceed four-point-two-six-zero. I see we're, okay, I got you. Nine thousand dollars away, so you got to make that up now, too.
Yeah. Councilman Rex.
Of course, it has contribution of, on your sheet, on the sheet has reserves and softball contribution. A hundred thousand of that is a Wiley Park irrigation. Is that correct? Or further reserves?
You're talking of the fifty thousand that?
Nope, not the fifty thousand, because that's coming out of your allocation from here every year on out.
Right.
And, but I'm talking like there was reserves and softball contribution of two-hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was money that we'd carried forward over the years. Had nothing to do with the Wiley irrigation project. There was, what we did was softball has a player improvement fund that they're fee that they put to their players. We matched that over the years, and then we took those two funds and we placed them. We just carried them forward into the budget every year, and that's where the, basically the hundred and, close to two-hundred thousand dollars has come from. So softball had about a hundred and some thousand invested into that. So it raises about ten thousand a year off of softball.
And then what does fifty thousand dollars a year do to your parks improvement budget?
Well, yeah, we'll have to make some decisions, obviously, of, to make some sacrifice. We're really hoping that as we get into this project and we do some naming rights and different things, that we can get that money back into our budget, and that we can be able to raise some funds through sponsorships and naming rights and different things. But that's our hope, and that's what we've told softball is that we intend to get our fifty thousand back. You know, we don't intend to give it up that long, so.
I could kind of answer that question. When I started in two thousand and nine, their annual allocation was about three hundred thousand per year. So over a ten-year period, as of two thousand and twenty, that was four-fifty-nine. So it's increased some, but it hasn't increased substantially.
It has, but the need never goes down.
No, it doesn't.
And as we hear with communities and all that, neighborhoods wanting, park improvements, no different than the Happy Home subdivision, no different than Wiley Parks, or Tomo comes in and asks us for money every year to replace sidewalks.
True.
You know, another fifty thousand may not seem like a lot, but it's, it's a nice, you can do a lot with fifty thousand, especially when, you know, your, your employees can help do a lot of the work.
Yep. Yeah, I think, but you're, you're only a hundred and sixty-eight thousand away, and that's, that's really good. Yeah, we've worked hard, and these, we've worked hard to get these numbers where we feel they're pretty fair. And we're really hoping that there's some in the, like, hint in the bidding process that we can do better. We'll see what happens there. And we do feel strongly that, and I think softball does too, that they will come to the plate. They're just, they're gonna, they're gonna have to do some work with their associations, but we're hoping that there'd be some funding coming out of that direction, and there will be. So is there some excitement there for this? Absolutely. Yeah, they've wanted this for years, and they realize that, you know, that there's got to be some sacrifices to get it done. We're in, you know, our softball fields need upgrading desperately. Casey's here, he can tell you what a state tournament will do here in town, which we haven't had for years. So we really feel strongly that, you know, we get going, we get it built, we get some naming rights going, we can, you know, get some really positive things done here. And we work closely with softball, and we know there's excitement there, and they'll come. They just, right now, they just got to work through their associations and their players. There's about, I don't know, about two thousand softball players in the community right now. So, yeah.
Big number.
It is a good number.
Any other questions for Mark?
I appreciate your support on this as well. Thank you.
Carl, got a motion from Bunsonis in a second, from Ronan on this. Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rex.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Congratulations, Mark. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
To us. Next, we've got Computer Services, purchase of desktop and notebook computer. Possible approval of the purchase, desktops, not top, notebooks in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and twenty-two cents from Dell, HP, and Computer Discount Warehouse Group, as requested by Computer Services. I don't see Austin here. So Carl, have you got some information on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Austin has worked to talk to the different vendors that are available, looked at the state contract, see what was out on bid there. Actually, for the desktops, we went to Dell, and they were able to match and even be better than what was on state contract. So we went with them for the desktops. For the notebooks, we were able to get those from HP off of the state contract. Then the three Lenovo workstations, they're a little higher-grade ones that we have some of our, for some of our very hardcore users. Again, those would be on, I think those are on state contract, those high-grade ones. But if not, he did contact and get quotes, and we took the lowest quote for those. All these items are within our computer budget.
Can I get a motion to make those purchases, please?
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonis in a second, from Clint Rex on that. Does anyone have any questions, Carl, as it relates to these purchases of computers? Otherwise, Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rex.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a hearing on retail on-off sale wine and cider license and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine license for the Teton Group LLC, DBA Fairfield Inn and Suites at twenty-nine oh one Sixth Avenue Southeast. Possible approval of that license. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Olson in a second, from Ronan. Is anyone here to talk about that? Does anyone have any questions as it relates to that, or concerns, or comments? All right. Well, then Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rex.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis. Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the same type of a thing, hearing on retail on-off sale wine and cider license for the Revive Day Spa Incorporated, DBA, Revive Day Spa at three oh one South Main Street. Possible approval of that. Fallon, I see, is here, but we'll see. Have you got anything to add, or should we just take this vote? Sounds great. Can I get a motion to make?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ronan in a second, from Bunsonis. Anybody have anything to state about this one? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rex.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Congratulations. Thanks for sticking it out with us. Next, we've got the city's bills. Approval of bill list for the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Reif in a second, from Lunsman. Anyone else have any questions?
There actually needs to be a change on the bills, and I talked to Carl about it. Under the governing body, there was a charge for the Chamber of Commerce, and they charged me under fifty dollars under my name, but it's only fifteen for the Community Affairs Luncheon where the state of the city address was happening.
Or maybe you ordered off the menu.
Nope, nope, nope. Got the same blouse, email everyone else.
I want to see the receipt.
I will, excuse me, I will check with their accounts payable. We'll look through the invoices, contact the Chamber of Commerce, and make sure that we pay the correct amount.
Thank you.
You notice he didn't take your word for it?
I don't even.
I'll follow up on it.
See that one listed, so. All right. Well, can I get a motion to pay the bills with Clint's recommended change?
I think we already have one.
Yeah. It's been a long meeting already, guys. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rex.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Epstein.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Epstein.
Mayor Shawman.
Epstein. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the payroll approval for the pay period of February second, two thousand and twenty, through February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, for the city's share of social security, old age, and survivors insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance. Can I get a motion to make payroll?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ronan in a second, from Olson. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rex.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll have the city managers report. Lynn, what have you got for us?
I've got one quick item, and I can't do it within fifteen seconds, but I can get close to thirty seconds to stay within my timeframe of six fifteen. I gave you a copy within the city managers report, a notice of the public open house for the Aberdeen Regional Airport master plan, an airport layout plan, which is next Tuesday from six to eight PM at the Public Safety Building. And if you have the time, I encourage you to come so you can hear about the plan for the future.
Thank you, Lynn. We'll take a motion to adjourn on this, and then we'll move into our work session next. Anyone else?
Move adjourn.
Motion Bunsonis in a second, from Ronan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
This next Tuesday. Yep. Okay. Case the public.
We're going into a work session. During a work session, we take no official action, but you're welcome to stay if you want to listen. What we have this evening is we have Dr. Richard Fersman, which is doing executive works for, is the proprietor for the executive